I feel in the matter of EJ M Barnes, we met for a council and another.
Thank you. Yes, Mr Levinson.
Yes, Mr Morning. I appear on behalf of the claimant appellant with me is Mr Beaumont, and for the respondent defendant, Mr Ford.
Yes.
This is the hearing of the claimant's appeal against the order of Mrs Justice Lambert, made on the 18th of July 2023.
Yes, Mr Levinson, shall we start with confirmation of the reporting restriction? We'll stick to the abbreviation that has been used below and elsewhere. And the appellant is entitled to lifelong anonymity under section one of the Sexual Offences Amendment Act 1992 accordingly. No matter relating to that person, to the appellant, shall during the appellant's lifetime be included in any publication if it is likely to lead members of the public to identify the appellant as the person against whom the offence is alleged to have been committed. Thank you. Yes.
I'm grateful. And of course, a key feature of this case-
Just checking, Mr Ford, no objection from you? No, thank you. Yes.
A key feature of this case is that the foster carer was related to the appellant.
Yes.
And so identifying the foster carer could also lead-
Absolutely. Yes.
I'm grateful. So this is the appeal against the order of Mrs Justice Lambert, which appears at page 57 in the bundle. By that order, the judge dismissed the claimant's appeal against the order of Mr Recorder Myerson, King's Council, made on the 13th of August 2021. That appears at page 145 in the bundle. So this is a second appeal which required the permission of the Court of Appeal, which was granted by Lord Justice DeGermans, and we see his order in the bundle.
Yes. In that context, Mr Levinson, in support of your submission that permission ought to be granted for what is a second appeal, page 19 of the bundle, you indicated there were a number of other cases raising the same or a similar point that awaits the outcome of this appeal. That's the case, as you understand it, is it? And they are cases under the, all the statistics you rely on relate to cases that are recent. Will you be addressing us on the current regime, on the current regime for foster parenting and child placements?
I can do so, although this case is obviously historic. The events happened in the 1980s before the current legislation.
But the cases that are in the pipeline are presumably more recent cases, engaging the 1989 Act regime or not?
I can only speak as to cases with my own practice, and I have a number of other cases, I think three other cases, that are more than beginning stage, but raise these issues. I'm afraid I don't have at my fingertips precisely when the abuse occurred in those stages. They'll certainly be historic cases, whether they predate the coming into force of the Children Act in 1990. I would need to refresh my memory.
Well, do you want to have a think about that? I mean, you've made the submission you have-
Yes.
-which suggests, as I say, recent reports by foster carers. If you suggest that there are issues that we can address by reference to the current regime, then you should make those submissions.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
I think sort of the point that I was trying to make in seeking permission to appeal was that this is not an isolated case, and this is not an isolated problem necessarily. It's difficult, of course, to extrapolate from the data very much, but certainly there's in recent years been quite a large number of reports of abuse in foster care, and that a significant number of placements are with friends and family. A bit beyond that, it's difficult to say much from that. So as the court will have seen, the claimant was born in 1970. His parents split up. His mother moved away to Scotland, and he remained with his father, who struggled to cope with him and his sister. And he came to be placed by the defendant with Mr and Mrs G on the 4th of January 1980, aged nine. Mrs G was his maternal aunt, she was his mother's sister, and Mr G was married to Mrs G. And the accepted evidence below was that the claimant had never before met Mr and Mrs G, and in fact did not even know that they existed. And there was some debate below about whether that made them strangers or not, and the distinction between relatives and family. But in any event, they had never met, and they were certainly not involved in the claimant's upbringing prior to that point. The Gs were invited to apply to become foster carers for the claimant, which they did. And on the 1st of August 1980, they were approved as foster carers for the claimant. And on the same date, the court made a care order in respect of the claimant in favour of the defendant. And the claimant remained living with the Gs until 1991. In his cases, but between 1980 and 1986, he was sexually abused by Mr G.
Could I just, forgive me, just go back over the legal position? There was no care order in force, was there, in this case? It was an assumption of parental rights under the old legislation. Is that right?
There was a care order in August 1980.
A care order?
Yes.
Do we have that?
No.
And is that in the agreed-
I will check. I will check that that's necessarily right, because there was a later stage where there was an assumption of parental rights, which might suggest that it had not been-
You wouldn't need to assume parental rights. Local authority would not need to assume parental rights if there was a care order.
Yes.
And this is, convoy was in my memory, Mr Levinson, but there were various ways you could come into care, pre-Children Act. And the two principal ones were care order under the, I think it was the 1963 or 69 Act, or assumption of parental rights initially under the 1948 Act-
Yes.
-and then under the 1980 Act. And I think in this case, it was an assumption-
Yes.
But I may be wrong about that, and I think we need to be clear.
We can check that. But the parties proceeded on the basis that he came into care, I think, under the 1948 Act, which was superseded by the 1980 Act.
Which came into force in April 81.
We've checked. We had to check.
So if we look at the chronology of relevant events at page 55, rather unhelpfully, we need to amend paragraph three, page 55 of the bundle. 1st of August 1980, the claimant was received into the care of the defendant pursuant to section two of the Child Care Act 1980. That's not right.
The child ca- I've checked.
And I'm piggybacking on my lord's learning.
Yes. I don't really think I've remembered this, but my recollection, my understanding is, and I've checked, it's quite hard to find on the internet, but I think the Children Child Care Act 1980 came into force on the 1st of April 1981. So at the material time, the incredibly, the 1948 Act was still in force. I say incredibly, it's the ancient history of family law.
Yes.
It doesn't make any difference, because there's no change in the substance of the law.
The wording is the same. We have in the authorities' bundle, the 1980 Act or part of it.
I think the judges refer, I think both judges refer to the 48 Act.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, can we just see what the, you see, this is, it's actually clear, page 234, the entry, the 1st of August 1980, received into care, section one of the 1948 Children Act.
Yes.
Does that help us with whether or not a care order was made? What does section one of the Children Act 1948 say?
Yes. Yes, we should need to look at that. The precise legal basis on which the claimant was accommodated may not directly bear on the issue of this appeal.
Well, section one of the 1948 Act says, where it appears to a local authority in respect to a child in their area, appearing to them to be under the age of 17, and then conditions including parents for the time being not suitable. It shall be the duty of the local authority to receive the child into their care. So it is receiving the child into care.
Yes. I'm sorry, I've asked my clerk to bring my computer, but from memory, I think it's the identical wording for no material change to the 1980 Act. Sorry, thank you. So the child is, that's right. I think it's the same wording effectively in the 1980 Act. So the child is received into care where the criteria are, as one of the criteria is set out in the position.
Yes.
There's no order.
No, that's right. I'm sorry, that is right. And later, we see that they obtained parental rights for the claimant, which wouldn't have been necessary.
There was a bit of a kerfuffle, if you read my officious notes, about the basis of that. The mother objected to exactly how it was originally expressed. So they changed the resolution. From January 19, it had to be recommended by the Social Services Department and approved by the Social Services Committee. And that finally happened in January 1981.
Yes.
At that point, parental rights were vested in the local authority.
Yes. And that would not have been necessary if there'd been a care order.
No.
Do you want me to ask for your computer?
She's got, she's bringing it. I'm sorry.
The particulars of claim, I don't think we need to go to them at this stage. You're at page 183 in the bundle. It'll be seen from that, that it was the claimant's case that the defendant's relationship with Mr G was one giving rise to vicarious liability for such of Mr G's torts as were closely connected with his work for the defendant. And so on that basis, it is said that the defendant is vicariously liable for the sexual abuse and assaults the claimant suffered, and liable to compensate him for the personal injuries suffered thereby. The defence is at page 179. It raises limitation. It does not accept the abuse, but it does accept that the defendant assessed and approved Mr and Mrs G to act as de facto foster carers for the claimant in August 1990.
Which paragraph is that? If you'd just remind me, please?
Page 179.
Yes. The acceptance of assessment. Thank you.
Paragraph four on page 180. Vicarious liability was denied. The defendant brought a part 20 claim against Mr G, seeking an indemnity or contribution. Mr G denied the abuse. It was ordered on the 1st of December 2020 that there be a preliminary issue as to vicarious liability. And that order is at page 177. We shall see in a moment, there are two stages to the test for the imposition of vicarious liability. Stage one concerns the relationship between the defendant and the tort visa. Stage two concerns the connection between that relationship and the tort. And this case concerns only stage one, the relationship between the defendant and the tort visa, Mr G. And so the court's order directing the trial of a preliminary issue as to vicarious liability was treated by the parties as relating only to that stage one question.
Did you both seek a preliminary issue just out of interest? Was it agreed there should be a preliminary issue?
I don't think anybody did, my lady. I think it was the decision of the district judge to order it. There was some initial debate about what its ambit would be, because there are other issues relating to limitation that may bear on it. But we decided-
Not right to-
-simply to deal with the stage one issue and leave anything else.
You were all there.
Yes. Not at the hearing when the district judge made the order.
Oh, page 177 suggests there was counsel for everybody there.
Yes.
But it wasn't you, Mr Ford, is that what you're saying?
No, nor me.
Right.
From recital, it appears that the court considered whether there should be preliminary hearings dealing with other matters as well, that it was only vicarious liability that was directed. As I've set out, that preliminary issue was heard and determined against the claimant, and the appeal against that determination was unsuccessful. There is a single ground of appeal, which appears at page 14 in the bundle. Which is that the recorder and the judge were wrong to conclude that the relationship between the defendant and Mr G was not one capable of giving rise to vicarious liability. And so the question for this court is, can there be vicarious liability for abuse perpetrated by a foster carer who is a relative of the victim in circumstances where there would be vicarious liability if he were not a relative? Does the fact that the tort visa was married to the claimant's aunt, who had never before met, lead to a different outcome? The recorder and judge thought so. They distinguished the Supreme Court decision in arms, which had held that there could be vicarious liability for what has been termed an ordinary foster carer. So the court will need to consider whether the judge and recorder correct to distinguish arms, which they did principally, because it was found that Mr G's motive for fostering the claimant meant that there was a distinction or division between his activity and the defendant's activity.
Well, Mrs Justice Lambert, correctly, you would say identified that motive was irrelevant, she's in one part of her judgment. But you say then overlooked that when it came to the application of the law to the facts, do you?
Yes, both judges.
Both judges.
And both, the recorder and the judge, rejected the claimant's submission that the focus should be on what Mr G was doing, not why he was doing it. And had the focus been on what he was doing, which was looking after a child in the care of the defendant, the courts would have found that there was no meaningful distinction to be drawn for the facts of arms. The courts below identified that the claimant being a relative of Mr G was a key feature of this case, but then failed sufficiently to remind themselves that that was not the relationship that mattered. The relationship that mattered for the purposes of vicarious liability was the relationship between the defendant and Mr G, not the relationship between Mr G and the claimant. And when the correct relationship is properly considered, my submission, the important features of that relationship are the same as they were in arms, and unaffected by the fact that Mr G and the claimant were relatives. Could I come now to the authorities, please? And I start with the Christian Brothers case, which is at page 14 in the authorities' bundle. I'm afraid the page numbers at the foot of the page are rather small.
Are you leaving the facts for the time being?
For now, although I shall make submissions on the facts as I deal with the authorities.
At some stage, it may not matter, but I wouldn't mind bottoming out as far as we can, the payment regime.
Yes.
So it looks as if there were weekly boarding out payments from January 1980 through to August. And then what happened? There were still payments. Were they weekly? Were they the same? Was it monthly? I don't know if you can help us on that, but I wouldn't mind knowing. As I say, it may not matter, but if you can tell us, that will be helpful.
There's a reference, which we can dig up later on, which suggests that they were not weekly, because the Gs asked for the payments to be made weekly and posed by the council.
There's a reference to weekly payments in January 1980. And then later, as you say, a request for weekly payments, which may suggest it changed. I don't know. Current need is for, 1st of January, 4th of January, current need is for weekly boarding out allowance to be paid under the situation is further clarified. Anyway, there we are.
So I start with the Christian Brothers case, which is at page 14 in the authorities' bundle. It's commonly referred to as the Christian Brothers case. It's actually properly entitled Various Claimants Against the Child, the Catholic Child Welfare Society. And the issue in this case was whether a religious order, the De La Salle brothers, were vicariously liable for torts committed by brother members of that order. And if I could start with page 25, all of these page references is the appeal bundle. It's paragraph 21 within the judgment. And in paragraph 21, Lord Phillips was considering the decision of the Court of Appeal in that case. And between C and D on the page, we see a sentence beginning at para 37 of his judgment in this case. Lord Justice Hughes rightly observed that the test, it's the test of vicarious liability, requires a synthesis of two stages. One, the first stage is to consider the relationship of D1 and D2, here the defendant and Mr G, to see whether it is one that is capable of giving rise to vicarious liability. Lord Justice Hughes identified the second stage as requiring examination of the connection between D2 and the act or omission of D1. That is not entirely correct. What is critical at the second stage is the connection that links the relationship between D1 and D2 and the act or omission of D1, hence the synthesis of the two stages. And as I said, there's no issue in this case that stage two would be satisfied if stage one is satisfied. I turn next to paragraphs 34 and 35. And if I could ask you to read those two paragraphs, please?
Yes. Yes.
So paragraph 35, Lord Phillips sets out five incidents that can make it fair and just for the imposition of vicarious liability. And the important point here is that those five incidents are the policy considerations why there should be vicarious liability. They are not themselves the test for the imposition of vicarious liability. And it's apparent, looking at those five incidents, that some are seemingly more pertinent to stage two, close connection, than stage one is the relationship one giving rise to vicarious liability.
Which ones?
Well, factor one, deep pockets, is considered in a number of the cases. That can't be relevant of itself to stage one. Factor two, tort committed as a result of activity being taken by the employee on behalf of the employer, seems to be exactly the stage two question, close connection. Question three on the facts of this case seems really to cover the same matters as incident two. Four, risk creation is also more obviously connected with stage two. And five, control might be relevant to both.
Sorry?
Control might be relevant to both. Sorry, which parts you say relate to stage one?
Well, control certainly does. Control certainly does.
What about two?
Well, two, whether the tort is committed as a result of activity being taken by the employee on behalf of the employer, is similar to the stage two close connection test.
But it's also something that we look at later. Authorities comes up at stage one.
Yes, it does.
I'm not sure that it's right to say that these are policy considerations all directed at, or mainly directed at stage two.
I don't say that, but I say they are seemingly more pertinent to stage two of the inquiry in some respect.
Hasn't the focus in the subsequent authorities rather moved away from looking at these policy considerations?
Yes.
Particularly in the light of what Lord Reed said in Cox.
Yes. Yes. But I make the point here, which will be more relevant later on, that on the facts of this case, incident two and incident three seem directed at the same considerations. But as I say, those are the policy considerations, they are not the test. The test appears in paragraph 47. And so the test at stage one is, is this a relationship of employment or sufficiently akin to employment? Bailey Mr G was not an employee of the defendant. And so in this case, the issue is, was he sufficiently akin to-
Not sufficiently akin, akin.
Yes.
That's what paragraph 47 says.
Yeah. I move now to Cox, please. Sorry. Cox, which is the case where the claimant was the manager of a prison kitchen. She was injured by the negligence of a prisoner working in the kitchen. And the issue was whether the prison service was vicariously liable for the negligence of that prisoner. Prisoner, of course, was not an employee of the prison service. There were other people who worked in the kitchen who- were other people who worked in the kitchen who were employees. But was the prisoner akin to being an employee? And Cox at page forty-one in the bundle, but I go, please, to page forty-five. And could I ask you to read paragraphs two and three, please? At paragraph fourteen, Lord Reed considered the Court of Appeals' decision in Cox, which he later upheld. And I say that there are parallels between that situation and the present case. The local authority had to achieve the accommodation of the claimant. Somebody had to do it. And if it hadn't been Mr and Mrs G, it would have had to have been somebody else. Moving on to page fifty-four, paragraph thirty-three, please. And if I could ask you to read, please, thirty-three, thirty-four and thirty-five.
Yes.
And I emphasize in particular the words in paragraph thirty-five just after B, nor does vicarious liability depend upon an alignment of the objectives of the defendant and of the individual who committed the act or omission.
And that connects to Lady Justice Nicola Davies' judgment elsewhere.
In MXX, yes, absolutely. So even if Mr G's motive was personal or familial, that does not mean that what he was doing was not also of benefit to the defendant. And moving on to page fifty-six, if I could invite you to read, please, forty, forty-one and forty-two.
Sorry, which paragraphs?
Forty, forty-one and forty-two, please.
So I understand it then, Mr Ford isn't relying on any policy arguments against you?
No. But what I take from paragraph forty-two in particular is, Lord Reed poses the question, why should Mrs Cox's entitlement to compensation depend upon whether the bag of rice was dropped on her by a prisoner or an employed worker in the kitchen? And one can apply that same thinking to this case, that if the claimant had been placed with different strangers, he would have an entitlement to compensation. But because he was placed with strangers that he happened to be related to, on the basis of the decisions below, he does not have an entitlement to compensation. Claimant, of course, had no choices to his placement. He was nine. So that is Cox. If I move now, please, to MXX, which appears at page one nine seven. This was a case decided after both of the decisions below. Where the claimant was abused by an eighteen-year-old young man who had done a week's work experience at her school. And the question, well, one of the questions was whether or not the man doing work experience stood in a relationship akin to employment with the school. The Court of Appeal held that that was akin to employment. But the important point, which I think has already been alluded to, is on page two one six, paragraph sixty-six. So Lady Justice Nicola Davies there is expressing the Cox point slightly differently. The benefits of a relationship to each may be different. That did not undermine a finding that the relationship was akin to employment, leading to vicarious liability. And I'll also refer to paragraph seventy-one, please, in MXX. And this was the basis for my submission earlier, that some of the five incidents identified by Lord Phillips are more relevant to stage two of the inquiry than stage one.
So the judge there is Lady Justice Nicola Davies, isn't it?
Yes.
Is rejecting, or has difficulty accepting the judge's rejection of the submission that PXM's role was integral to the defendant's business. She says that the points about the limited role were relevant to the second stage rather than the first.
Yes.
So...
So on the facts in that case, he was doing work experience.
Yes.
He had very limited duties at the school. The judge below had found that that suggested that he was not in a relationship akin to employment. Lady Justice Nicola Davies said, no, that wasn't relevant to that question. But the fact that he had a very limited role may mean that the abuse was not closely connected with his work. And the case ultimately did fail on that point.
I'm sorry, I follow that.
Sorry. The abuse occurred weeks after the tort fees as brief spell at the school.
Well, the assault did. The abuse, if that term encompasses grooming, commenced whilst he was at the school. But the Court of Appeal found that because he had no pastoral responsibility for pupils, there was no close connection between his work experience and that abuse.
Maybe I misread it. I thought that she was inclined to accept the submission that the role, the role was integral to the defendant's business. So in other words, the relation that was akin to employment under stage one, but rejected stage, rejected the stage two on the fact. I mean, I'm not...
That's right. He was akin to an employee, but because his tasks were very limited, the abuse was not connected with those tasks.
This phrase, integral to the defendant's business, it seems to be the important phrase. I think it's, again, I think we didn't look at it with Lord Reed in Cox, but that's where I think it comes from when he's talking about Lord Phillips, his policies.
Yes.
That's the phrase, isn't it? We have to look at.
Yes.
Integral to the defendant's business.
I don't see a bright line, very, I don't find a bright line very easy to identify between stage one and stage two factors. I think that certain factors can be relevant to both. There isn't a clear distinction. I mean, in this paragraph, the lady judge doesn't say it's irrelevant to stage one. She just says it's more relevant to stage two. So I think a lot of these factors cover both or relevant.
Yes.
Greater or lesser degree to both stages.
Yes, and that chimes with Lord Phillips's endorsement of Lord Justice Hughes's analysis in the Court of Appeal and Christian Brothers, but what was recalled was a synthesis of the two stages.
Yeah.
Although this point does crop up again in the next case, which is BXB, is the latest Supreme Court decision in this area.
And this came out after the hearing below, before Mrs Justice Lambert, before the judgment was handed down.
Yes, and the judge invited further submissions, which were, which were made. And indeed, the passages from BXB are reproduced in Mrs Justice Lambert's judgment.
Yes.
And the parties' submissions below were that BXB did not change the law, but it was a helpful expression.
Well, Lord Burrows's summary of the law is, that's what the law now is according to the Supreme Court, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so the brief facts of this case were that the claimant had been sexually assaulted by an elder in the Jehovah's Witness community. And there are issues as to whether or not he was akin to an employee of the Jehovah's Witness congregation, and whether the assault was closely connected with that role. And the Supreme Court held that he was akin to an employee, but there was no close connection. And the heart of this is on page one two eight, paragraph fifty-eight.
Do we need the earlier authorities that you've taken up to, in the light of this summary?
Not necessarily. But they show the context of it. And Cox, in particular, is very helpful when considering whether someone who doesn't, on the face of it, look much like an employee can be regarded as akin to an employee. The whole of paragraph fifty-eight is relevant, but for now, if I could invite you to read Roman paragraphs one and two, please.
It's Roman two, which is pretty, is central to arc this appeal, isn't it?
Absolutely. And Mrs Justice Lambert quoted this paragraph in paragraph twenty-three of the judgment, page sixty-six in the bundle. But with respect to the judge, what she did not then go on to do is to apply the features that Lord Burrows had identified in fifty-eight two to the facts of this case. And the way that they should be applied, I set out on page, internal page eight of my skeleton argument, paragraph fourteen. What I have sought to do...
Page twenty-two.
Yes. And what I have sought to do in paragraph fourteen is extract the features that Lord Burrows had identified that may be relevant and apply them to the facts of this case. And I say that they all point towards a relationship akin to employment. Work was paid for in money, integral to the organisation of the defendant in the same way as arms, accommodate children in its care. Control was the same as in arms. D, the work was carried out for the defendant's benefit. And the important point here, drawing on MXX and Cox, is even if the work of caring for the claimant was for the benefit of the Gs and the wider family, it was also of benefit to the defendant, which had to provide accommodation for the claimant. And so the fact that it furthered the family's objectives does not mean that it wasn't also furthering the defendant's objectives. As Lady Justice Nicola Davies said, the benefits of a relationship to each may be different. Turning to the situation with regard to appointment and termination, that was one of the features identified by Lord Burrows. We say that was the same in this case as it was in arms. And I have set out in the skeleton argument a reference in the expert opinion, the joint expert opinion, should be at page two one nine of the bundle, but I've set it out in the skeleton argument. I think there's a typo in the original. I think it probably should read, when relatives were being assessed to become de facto foster carers, rather than de facto relatives, that seems.
Sorry, where are you?
Well, if we go to the original, which is at page two one nine.
Sorry, of the authorities' bundle?
No, in, sorry, in the appeal bundle.
Two one nine.
This is within the report of the jointly instructed social work experts.
Yes.
Paragraph four point fourteen.
Yes.
Last four lines of that, I would make the point that when de facto relatives were being assessed to become foster cars, I'd say that should be read as when relatives were being assessed to become de facto foster carers.
Yes.
But anyway, the point is that the process and subsequent regulations were almost identical. So applying that to paragraph fifty-eight in BXB, the situation with regard to appointments and termination was the same as it was in arms. The defendant appointed Mr and Mrs G as foster carers and was... The defendant appointed Mr. and Mrs. G as foster carers and was able to terminate that appointment. And then finally, hierarchy of seniority. The Mr. and Mrs. G were answerable to the defendant's social worker and that person's manager. Regular monitoring and supervision by the defendant's social worker position was the same as in Arms. And so applying the akin-to-employment test, which is the only test, the lower court should have found that the relationship between the defendant and Mr. G was capable of giving rise to vicarious liability, applying guidance from BXB. Just stay on BXB, please. If we could go to paragraph 69. The last sentence of paragraph 69 comes back to the point about the applicability of some of the five incidents in risk creation to stage one. And I say that marries up with what Lady Justice Nicola Davies said in relation to business integration in MXX. And so we say, applying Lord Burrows' guidance, this should have been considered a relationship akin to employment. Now, of course, one could easily be forgiven for thinking at first blush that a foster carer is not very much like an employee at all. So the courts below did not have to consider this matter afresh, because the Supreme Court in Arms had already considered precisely this. And it's to Arms that I now turn, please, at paragraph, at page 58 in the authorities bundle. There were two issues in Arms. The first was whether abuse perpetrated by foster carers amounted to a breach of the local authority's non-delegable duties to the child. The Supreme Court found that it did not. The second was whether foster carers stood in a relationship akin to employment so that there could be vicarious liability for that abuse. And the Supreme Court found that that was the case. The first part of the judgment deals with a non-delegable duty issue, page 81, paragraph 59. Lord Reed, given the judgment of the majority, considers the five factors in that case. And I'm afraid it's quite a long passage, paragraphs 59 through to the end of 65. And I would invite you to read those, please, because they are particularly pertinent to this case.
Paragraph 61, the question of risk creation. Was that not an issue that Lord Reed said in BXB, wasn't relevant to stage one?
Lord Burrows.
Lord Burrows did?
Yes. BXB is decided after Arms, of course.
Sorry?
BXB is decided after Arms.
Yes. So what do we make of paragraph 61, then?
Well, there is that tension.
Well, it's a bit more than that, isn't it? Did Lord Burrows address paragraph 61 of Arms?
It was considered, but it was considered in relation to stage two in that case.
Right. Well, yes. So what's your position? Who's right? Is risk creation part of a stage one consideration or part of a stage two consideration?
Well, on the facts of this case, if I may avoid the question in this way, both the judge and the recorder found that that feature was satisfied in the claimant's favour. So insofar as it is a feature.
I understand it's a merits answer, but as a matter of principle, what do you say? Is risk creation relevant to stage one, as Lord Reed appears to have thought in Arms? Or not relevant to stage one, as Lord Burrows appears to have thought in BXB?
The greater respect to Lord Reed, it appears more relevant to stage two.
Thank you.
What Lord Burrows said about this in BXB at paragraph 46 was that paragraph 60 of Lord he said, in deciding that the test at stage one was satisfied, the most important passage in Arms is at paragraph 60, which he then quotes at paragraph 46. And of course, Lord Reed agreed with Lord Burrows's judgment in Arms.
As I say, there is that tension.
Lord Phillips observed that vicarious liability is on the move, is what he said in the Christian Brothers case.
And of course, Lord Justice Bean was closely involved in BXB.
But part of the difficulty arises because these are the reasons for the rule, not the test for the application of the rule. And in difficult cases, the courts have then gone on to test their conclusion by looking at the policy considerations.
Anyway, you say if it is relevant at stage one, it's answered in your favour.
Yes. If I can just take you back, if we're going to BXB, if Lord Burrows's summary is, as it were, the current state of the law, he quotes Arms when he's going through the case law. In his summary of the law at paragraph 58 in the section you took, his reference to Arms is at Roman 4 on page 129 of the bundle, where he says that the and again, you haven't taken us to Lady Hale, you don't need to, in Barclay's Bank, but he says that the the five points are, the key question is the test. And it can be useful, or as he says, let us see, not to deny that in difficult cases, and in line with what Lord Reed said in Cox, having applied the test, it can be a useful check to look at the policy, i.e. the five incidents. And then goes on to talk about, cites some authorities and case and commentary about that. And then he says at the bottom of Roman 4, root the core idea as reflected in the judgments of Lord Reed in Cox and Arms, see above, appears to be that the employer or quasi-employer who's taking the benefit of the activities carried on by a person integrated into its organisation should bear the cost. And that's where he talks about Arms in the context of the principles, of, sorry, of his summary of the law.
Yes.
But as I say, what he says at 46 is where he highlights on paragraph 60 of Lord Reed in Arms, rather than 61. Parts of the passage you've taken us to.
Yes. But then there is the last sentence of paragraph 59 that we've looked at. But in any event, as Malice said, insofar as it is relevant in this case, it's satisfied in the claimant's favour. So we've looked at the five incidents in Arms. I turn now, please, to the dissenting speech of Lord Hughes. And paragraphs 87 to 90. And I think it's important to look at this now, because when considering the position in relation to foster carers, the majority in the Supreme Court is addressing Lord Hughes's concerns as expressed in paragraphs 87 to 90. But I remind the court, as you improve, this is, of course, the dissenting speech. So if I may paraphrase, Lord Hughes had four concerns. The first was that if there was vicarious liability for ordinary foster carers, then there would also be vicarious liability for parents. Second, the local authority had a lack of control over the daily life of the child, the foster child. Third, that liability would deter local authorities from making foster placements. And fourth, that it could lead to a flood of claims. The third and fourth considerations, that it would deter placements and lead to a flood of claims, were dealt with by the majority in paragraphs 68 and 69. His second concern related to the lack of control, and that was dealt with by the majority in paragraph 62, which we've looked at already. Then the concern as to the position of parents was dealt with in paragraphs 71 and 72 by the majority. And these two paragraphs, 71 and 72, were understandably considered particularly important in the context of this case by the courts below. And our submission is that the majority in the Supreme Court considered that the important difference to be not the title of the person, but whether the carer was recruited, selected or trained by the local authority to discharge its childcare functions on the one hand, or whether the role is one that the carer would anyway be undertaking, raising their own child independent of the childcare services carried on by the local authority. And Lord Hughes had gone further when he said, any member of the extended family or close friend who undertakes the care of children in need is doing so in the interests of the family, not as part of a local authority enterprise. But the majority did not accept that this analysis could extend so far, discover any such person, and instead limited it to parents, et cetera, who were raising their own child independent of the childcare services carried on by the local authority. And the reference at the end of paragraph 72 to parents or perhaps other family members in our submission means that ordinarily it would be parents who are raising their own child. But there may be cases where somebody other than a parent was raising the child. The point is not whether they're a parent or a grandparent or an aunt or uncle. Point is whether it is something that they were anyway doing, raising the child as their own.
In using those words at the end of 72, was Lord Reed harking back to paragraph 74, line four, in the concerns of Lord Hughes?
I'm sorry, paragraph 74?
No, 71, line four.
Yes.
Hughes, Lord Hughes was concerned that if you impose vicarious liability, and logically you might be imposing it for torts committed by parents and other family members. And then at the end of 72, Lord Reed harking back to that, albeit with the word perhaps.
Yes. And the point is that children can be placed back at home on a care order. And the Supreme Court was understandably anxious to avoid the situation that where that happens, and a child then suffers mistreatment from their parent, the local authority should not be vicariously liable
Yes, he does. And does he accurately summarise the, I'm sure he does, accurately summarise the present regime?
I'm afraid that's not being researched for the purposes of this, my lady, but in any event, it's not the regime in place at the time we event in question in this case. So Arms is not authority for the proposition that there cannot be vicarious liability for relatives who are used as foster carers. The Supreme Court did not say that. The distinction being drawn by the majority was between carers who would bring up their own child independently on the one hand, and on the other, carers who were recruited, selected and trained by the local authority to care for a child in its care. And Mr and Mrs G were very much closer to the latter category than the former. They were not bringing up their own child. Instead, they were looking after the claimant on behalf of the local authority through a process that could be described as recruitment and selection. And the judge deals with this at paragraphs thirty-five and thirty-six in the judgment, which is at page seventy-two in the appeal bundle.
So factors in favour, two factors against, three factors against, not recruited or selected, paragraph thirty-seven, not trained, paragraph thirty-eight. Those are the two factors.
Yes, and I shall deal with why we say those conclusions were wrong. But looking first at paragraph thirty-six, Mrs Justice Lambert says, as Lord Reed said in Arms at seventy-one, even in cases in which the parents are foster parents, many of those features will be present, including the monitoring and supervision by the local authority. But that's not quite what Lord Reed said. He didn't say that parents would ever be described as foster parents. Lord Reed has simply said that their care of a child, the parents' care of their child, might be approved and subject to monitoring and termination. A parent for whom there'd be no vicarious liability could never be said to have applied for the role. That important difference was given insufficient weight by the judge. Another distinction is that parents would not be paid to care for their own child. But as my lady has identified, in paragraphs thirty-seven and thirty-eight of the judgment, Mrs Justice Lambert then considers recruitment, selection and training. But we say that they were recruited and selected. One looks at paragraph thirty-five of Mrs Justice Lambert's judgment. Fourth line down, the Gs were required to apply for the role of foster parents, and there was some form of risk assessment in which Mr and Mrs G were both interviewed for the role. And I say that being required to apply for a role is the same as being recruited. That's a distinction without a difference. Mrs Justice Lambert sets out the key facts a little early in her judgment at paragraph thirty-two. If one looks at Roman two, about seven lines up from the bottom of Roman two on page seventy in the appeal bundle, the Gs were advised they would have to think very carefully about applying to be claimants' foster parents. The same point in Roman four on page seventy and Roman five. And so we say the judge should have found, given those findings of fact, that Mr and Mrs G were recruited by the defendant as foster carers. The fact that they were not pre-approved is irrelevant. They were certainly selected, they went through a vetting process. The suitability of Mr and Mrs G was carefully considered by the defendant, that amounts to selection. Their application could have been rejected. The defendant considered Mr and Mrs G's previous convictions and whether or not that affected his suitability. And the fact that that may have been considered differently for him doesn't make it any less of a selection process, simply means a different outcome was accepted. The suitability was very much considered by the defendant, who could have rejected his application. So we say there was recruitment and selection. The judge dealt with training in paragraph thirty-
There was not recruitment and selection and training, or at least the opportunity to train. Do you accept that there should not be vicarious liability? Is that the trigger point?
Well, that was certainly very important in paragraph seventy-one of Arms. And the distinction that was being drawn on one side was recruit, select, train, and on the other hand, raising their own child.
And in paragraph five of your skeleton argument, you say it's possible that there may be a difference in the pre-first of August and post-first of August position. What's your position?
We say there is no difference in outcome, and the courts below have never considered that there should be a difference, because what practically was being done was the same.
What does that mean?
Well-
On the second of January nineteen eighty, there had been no Form F, there'd been no, as I understand it, none of the subsequent interviews, assessment and all the rest of it. But you say, even without all of that, on the second of January nineteen eighty, there was a relationship akin to employment.
Yes, there was a preliminary selection process. They were considered, the suitability was considered in the week before the claimant was placed there. But that process was conducted in more depth over the coming months.
So when do you say the vicarious liability arose?
When he was placed there.
On the fourth of January nineteen eighty?
Yes. But as I accept in this skeleton argument, it is, there are other permutations that are possible. There are other permutations that are possible.
Is that consistent with what Lord Reed said and what the majority said in Arms?
Well, we say that the relationship was the same throughout.
Clearly wasn't the same throughout, wasn't the same. Might be similar, but the relationship on the first of August nineteen eighty was different to the relationship on the fourth of January.
Yes.
It wasn't the same, do you accept that?
Yes, of course.
You say different, but not materially different.
Yes.
Right.
But the task they were engaged in was the same throughout.
But I thought we were supposed to be focusing on the relationship between the defendant and the alleged wrongdoing and the local authority?
Yes.
Well, you say, I suppose, you say that there is liability already, there's a sufficient relationship as from January, but if you're wrong about that, then certainly from August.
Yes, it gets stronger after August, certainly. And it may well be, it is that, that the social work expert had in mind when he referred to de facto foster carers, effectively what they were prior to August nineteen eighty. But certainly, there's more formality surrounding the relationship after August. Training is dealt with by the judge in paragraph thirty-eight on page seventy-two. And we say that they had such training as they needed. They had their own son, who was about two years older than the claimant, that they had successfully parented, so they're experienced parents. The claimant had no particularly unusual needs. So there was no need of specialist training. If we turn to page two-three-three, please.
Now, this is the Form F, which the social worker said was most probably completed May to July nineteen eighty.
Yes.
So paragraph, it may not matter at all, but just so we are all aware, paragraph thirty-eight of the judgment therefore should be tweaked to that extent, because the learned judge says the records state in January nineteen eighty, and actually it's in the Form F, which is May to July.
Yes. And around the centre of page two-three-three, paragraph in italics, the Gs, if approved, are fully aware of their role. And so we say the need for training was considered, and they didn't need any in particular. And to save jumping around whilst we're in the records, if I could just draw attention to four other entries, please, that aren't directly relevant to this point, but do have some relevance. The next is on page two-forty. An entry for February nineteen eighty-three, we say shows the Gs regarding the claimant differently to their own child.
And what's the point?
Well, it undermines the purely familial context. And the last entry, the last bullet point, it would seem that Mr G has played a lesser part. Bottom of two-four-eight.
The point you're making is that there was not a purely familial context.
Yes.
That there was a distinction between the way in which Mr G treated his son and the appellant.
Yes. And that, as with an employment relationship, there was a financial aspect to it. And we see that again on two-four-nine. Around the middle of the page, there's an entry, July nineteen eighty-four.
My dear, another bit in two-four-eight, it's felt Mr G, to some extent, regards the appellant as a source of extra income.
Yes. And then finally, in the records, a slightly different point, page two-three-five. Bottom entry, twenty-seventh of April nineteen eighty.
And the point is?
It shows not only the defendant's control, but undermines the purely familial aspect. What had happened here was that the family had gone up to Scotland, where the claimant's mother, Mrs G's sister, was living. They had arranged a meeting between the claimant and his mother, and the local authority had prohibited that. So that shows the local authority controlling the family aspect of this relationship, undermines the argument that this was an informal familial relationship, to the extent that contact with his own mother is being controlled by the defendant. But I digress a little, and I was addressing recruited, selected, trained on the one hand, and as against that, on the other hand, we have a foster carer who is raising their own child independent of the childcare services carried on by the local authority. And it's easy to see why the position should be the same, whether a child is brought up by a birth parent or someone else who acts as a parent, some other family member. What matters, for the purposes of this distinction-
The point you're trying, you're making is the, that there is, it was not a purely familial context?
Yes.
That there was a distinction between the way in which Mr. G treated his son and the appellant.
Yes. And that, as with an employment relationship, there was a financial aspect to it. And we see that again on two-four-nine. Around the middle of the page, there's an entry, July nineteen eighty-four.
My, another bit in two-four-eight, it's felt Mr. G to some extent regards the appellant as a source of extra income.
Yes. And then finally in the records, a slightly different point, page two-three-five. Bottom entry, twenty-seventh of April nineteen eighty.
And the point is?
It shows not only the defendant's control, but undermines the purely familial aspect. What had happened here was that the family had gone up to Scotland, where the claimant's mother, Mrs. G's sister, was living. They had arranged a meeting between the claimant and his mother, and the local authority had prohibited that. So that shows the local authority controlling the family aspect of this relationship, undermines the argument that this was an informal familial relationship, to the extent that contact with his own mother is being controlled by the defendant. But I digress a little, and I was addressing recruited, selected, trained on the one hand, and as against that, on the other hand, we have a foster carer who is raising their own child, independent of the childcare services carried on by the local authority. And it's easy to see why the position should be the same, whether a child is brought up by a birth parent or someone else who acts as a parent, some other family member. What matters, for the purposes of this distinction, is that that person was anyway bringing up a child as their own. And Mr. and Mrs. G were very clearly not doing that. The evidence accepted by the judge in paragraph thirty-three, page seventy-one, is that they had never been. And so we say that it could not then be said that Mr. and Mrs. G were raising their own child, independent of the childcare services carried on by the local authority. And so the result should have been the same as in Arms. The five incidents were considered by the judge and the recorder. I deal with them in paragraphs thirty-two to thirty-nine of my skeleton argument.
Yes.
But suffice it to say for now that four of the five were found to be satisfied in the claimant's favour. So the means of the defendant that was satisfied, three, part of the defendant's business activity was satisfied, four, risk creation was satisfied, and five, control, were all found to be satisfied. The only one that was found not to be satisfied by the recorder and the judge was two, which is whether the tort was committed as a result of activity being undertaken for the defendant. And in our submission, there's a slight inconsistency there, in that factor two and factor three on the facts of this case seem to cover the same territory. Yet two was found not to be satisfied, three was satisfied, that their work was part of the defendant's business activity. And the one that was found not to be satisfied was a fact of that Lady Justice Nicola Davies in MXX had found to be more of a stage two consideration than a stage one consideration. If you could move, please, to paragraph forty in the judgment, page seventy-three. And I draw attention here, just going back to paragraph thirty-one, please, the last sentence of paragraph thirty-one. We say that notwithstanding the judge saying, "I do not therefore find that the question of the imposition of vicarious liability or not in this context can be resolved by reference simply to the relationship between the claimant and the Gs' family," we say that nonetheless that that does rather come to be a key consideration. As I said at the outset, that's not, that's not a relationship that matters in any case. It's a relationship between the defendant and Mr. G. So paragraph forty-one, please. There are two separate points out of this, so if I could ask you to read the first half, up to although there is no direct evidence, please. So the judge is here directing herself that the circumstances in which the claimant came to live with the Gs was the most relevant consideration. She says the same in the last sentence of paragraph forty-four. "Over the most compelling aspect of the evidence which leads to my conclusion that the G family were not engaged in activity undertaken on behalf of the defendant is the circumstances in which he came to be taken in by the family." And the judge makes the finding in relation to how he came to be taken in by the family in paragraph thirty-two, Roman two, on page seventy.
Yes.
And given the importance that the judge was attaching to the circumstances in which the claimant came to move, to live with the G family, we say there's an unfortunate error in reproducing the entry from the records here. And if I could ask you, please, to keep one finger in the judgment on page seventy, but also to open up page two-two-eight.
Yes.
And to compare the last six or so lines of the judgment at thirty-two-two with the entry at the bottom of page two-two-eight, "it was agreed that the Gs would meet."
Well, sorry, the judge is taking, is quoting from the middle paragraph. Understand, they've taken an interest in DJ in recent months? Yes?
Yes.
So where's the error? It's in the next bit, we'd have to think very carefully about lying.
And then "it was agreed that the Gs would meet."
Over the following week. And if all went well, he would come to them for the beginning of that's all correct?
Yes.
And what's wrong?
What's wrong is the last line on two-two-eight, that the decision as to whether placement goes ahead is one for the defendant, not the family. Whereas in the judgment at thirty-two-two, it says this decision was discussed with senior staff, doesn't make it clear that the decision is not for the G family, it's for the defendant to make. So the G family are going to meet with the claimant for the first time, and if all goes well, the Gs may well be keen on the arrangement, but it wasn't just up to them, it was up to the defendant whether the placement went ahead. And given the importance that the judge attaches to the circumstances in which the claimant comes to live with the family, it is important in our submission to bear in mind that the decision as to whether the placement went ahead was for defendants, not the families.
On the next page, I, two-two-nine, we have the, in italics, the first few lines, a description of what happened when he went to stay with the Gs. And then PD is, is the initial of the author of the report, isn't it?
Yes.
That's his comment.
Yes.
Which I think is his comment on the following lines in italics. "It appears that there has been no C1 and C2 for him when he was readmitted to care and boarded out with the Gs." So that's a note that he's found in the file from February nineteen eighty-six.
Yes.
And then a few, and then he comments further on that a Form C1 was completed on the first of August nineteen eighty, when the Gs were approved as foster carers, and his status changed from boarding out to received into care. What do you understand boarding out to mean?
Well, boarding out was the old term for fostering.
Okay, a child who was boarded out would now be described as having been fostered. Well, how would you describe the, the change that occurred on the first of August nineteen eighty? But he was still boarded out.
Well, his status changed.
Says his status changed?
Yes.
From boarding out to received into care?
Yes. But the boarded out is simply the means by which he was accommodated.
Well, what was his status then, in, before the first of August?
Well, it seems to be more.
He was in care? Doesn't look like he had been received into care until the first of August.
Well, it seems to have not been properly dealt with at the time, because the C1 form, as they say, was not completed until later.
Right, okay.
We don't want a C1, I'm afraid, if I ever knew what a C1 was, I've long since forgotten, but you don't know what a Form C1 did or. No, I'm afraid that's not the purpose of what it, what its function was.
He, he had been, in modern language, a looked-after child in nineteen seventy-five for a period, and that seems to be that reference.
Well, is looked after a phrase which appears in the pre-Children Act legislation?
I don't believe it is.
Looked after is the generic term to describe all children being looked after, both in care and not in care by local authorities under the Children Act.
Yes.
So was he, was he being looked after by the local authority? And what's your submission on his status, on the status between January and August nineteen eighty?
Well, he was being looked after and being formally received into the defendant's care.
How would you then describe, if the key thing is the relationship between the local, between the defendant and the Gs, if that's the key thing, how would you describe that relationship in that period?
Akin to employment, because they were using him to discharge their responsibility to accommodate the claimant. And that the legal status changed in nineteen eighty, but the way that the Gs were being used did not change. But as my lord said earlier, certainly the position becomes stronger and clearer after August nineteen eighty. So I go back to paragraph forty-one in the judgment, please, on page seventy-three. And I think I asked you to read the first half earlier. If I could ask you now to read, please, the second half of paragraph forty-one of the judgment, starting although there is no direct evidence, and also paragraph forty-two. And we say that this was the key error, to consider Mr. G's motive, the reason why he took on parole. Why a tort visa took on a role has never previously been considered relevant to whether or not the relationship was akin to employment. And the recorder dealt with it in much the same way, page one-three-five, paragraph forty.
Yes.
And so a key part of a decision of both courts below related to Mr. G's motive.
Sorry, paragraph, which is the recorder's judgment, please?
Forty, please, on one-three-five.
One-three-five?
Page one-three-five.
Oh, yes. Yes. Thank you.
And so a key part of a decision related to motive, and the first point here is that there was no evidence as to Mr. G's motive. And there was no evidence, because the parties agreed correctly in our submission, that it was an irrelevant consideration. If the recorder had said, notwithstanding the party's position that he wished to consider it, that there could have been evidence. Mr. G was the Part Twenty defendant for proceedings, he was represented at the hearing before the recorder, that evidence could have been adduced, and likewise, it may have been possible to induce evidence from the defendant as to why it was Mr. G that was chosen. But we say there was no sound evidential basis for inferring that Mr. G took on parole simply because the claimant was family.
You would, you would, you would say, well, you might be right, but so what?
I do say that, but at the moment I'm dealing with, is it even right?
Yes.
I come to this, so what? And that may have been Mr. G's motive, but there are other possibilities. One is, he did it for the money.
Yeah.
Another might be that he did it as a, to achieve a companion for his own son. It may be his motives were wholly nefarious from the outset. And notwithstanding the submission that motive is irrelevant, the courts below should not have speculated without evidence. have speculated without evidence.
Well, Mrs Justice Lambert said there was the clarity of inferences.
Well, in fact, there was an important factor that created a contrary inference, and that is this. If the Gs simply wanted to raise the claimant as a family member, they could have done so without going through the fostering process. They could have simply agreed, but they would bring up the claimant with his father or mother as well. The defendant, because if one's considering motive, one has to consider the defendant's motive too, also had an alternative, and we see that from the Childcare Act, which is set out in page nine, the authorities' bundle, and section 21 of the 1980 Act.
Of course, as my lady's reminded us, that wasn't in force at the relevant time.
No, it came into-
There would have been, there would have been an equivalent, I assume, in the earlier legislation.
Yes. And section 21.1 sets out ways in which a local authority can discharge its duty to provide accommodation for a child in its care. And 21.1A is boarding out. But 21.2 provides an alternative. It could have simply allowed the claimant to be under the charge and control of a parent, guardian, relative, or friend.
But all that assumes they could have afforded to do that.
Yes. But there were, there was an alternative. They didn't have to go through this fostering route. And having elected to go down the fostering route, both Mr G and the defendant, Mr G achieved the benefits of payment and support from the local authority. The defendant achieved the benefit of control. But having elected to go down that route, it is not, in our submission, unjust or even surprising that the outcome should be that other features of a fostering relationship, in this case vicarious liability, also attach to that relationship. It's simply a consequence of Mr G and the defendant choosing to set up their affairs in that way. And so I say that undermines the fact that there were alternatives, possibly undermines the inference that the judge made, which in any event was unsupported by evidence. But the headline point is really that if paragraph 42 of Mrs Justice Lambert's judgment accurately states the law, that when considering whether someone is akin to an employee, the courts can or should consider motive, the law has changed the way it has previously been expressed. It's of course right that there is no separate regime for foster carers, so the normal principles of vicarious liability apply. And in none of the authorities has the quasi-employee's motive been considered relevant to whether or not he should be considered akin to an employee, was not on Lord Burrows' list in BXB. And there is authoritative words to the contrary in COCs and MXX, that the benefits do not need to align, motives can be different. And indeed, if one thinks about many of the cases, it won't be unusual for the employee or quasi-employee's objective in taking on parole to be different to the employer's objective. In fact, the few cases where one might expect a close alignment between the employer and employee objectives of a clergy case is, so there's E, someone called JGE against the Bishop of Portsmouth, where there was vicarious liability, stage one was satisfied for a Catholic priest who were part of a bishop. There's the Christian Brothers case that involved a religious order. There's BXB concerning an elder in the Jehovah's Witness community. Those are all cases where there may well have been a close alignment between the tort visa's objectives and the employer's objectives, but motive wasn't mentioned in any of those cases as being a relevant consideration. And if motive is henceforth to be relevant, it gives rise to some difficult questions. Is why the worker takes on the role relevant to employment or just akin to employment? It's difficult to see why the test should be different. Does that motive have to be communicated to the defendant? Importantly, what if Mr and Mrs G had different objectives? Would the legal position be different for both of them, notwithstanding that they're taking on the same task? What if, as may well be the case, they had more than one motive? Does the court need to consider a primary motive? Also pertinently, what if the motive changes over time? It's very possible that Mr G's reason for fostering the claimant was not the same as his reason for continuing to foster the claimant many years later. Does the nature of a relationship then change? Does that have to be communicated to the other parties, or is it just by reference to Mr G's inner thoughts? That would be very peculiar.
Do I find in your skeleton argument, what I understand to be an anterior head-on challenge to the judge's finding in paragraph 41 as to the circumstances in which the drawing of the inference? I'm not sure I had picked that up. Perhaps you could just show me where it is.
Yeah, so this is paragraphs 43 onwards in my skeleton argument.
Yes, no, I understand the point of principle, that motive and all the rest of it, that I had not previously understood. You say it was, that was just not an inference, not a conclusion she was entitled to reach, it was irrational, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, we certainly do see in the skeleton that there was no evidence on this, because it was irrelevant.
All right.
I can-
Paragraph 52, perhaps? Anyway, there it is.
Sorry, I can't immediately find it, but there is a line that says that there was no evidence on, on it anyway, because it was irrelevant.
Right.
Paragraph 56, I'm reminded, thank you. There's also the, the difficult issue if motive is to be irrelevant. When is that motive to be assessed? Is it at the creation of a relationship, or is it at the time of a commission of the tort? That's when vicarious liability is being considered. And also, what if an ordinary foster carer happened to be a family friend? Would that, would their motive then be relevant? These are all difficult questions that the judges below didn't grapple with, that the courts will henceforth have to grapple with if motive is now a relevant consideration. And the authorities provide no assistance at all because it's never previously been considered to be part of the test. But if paragraph 42 of the judge's judgment is right, then there has been a change to the correct approach in this area of law that had seemed settled. And it's not confined simply to foster care cases, it would be any case where one is considering akin to employment. And this point has been picked up on by two academic writers. We see their articles in the authorities' bundle, the first is at page 221.
221.
221, please, of the authorities.
Yes.
And this is an article in the Journal of Personal Injury Law by Mr Tavares, King's Counsel. His comment on the decision of Mrs Justice Lambert is at page 223.
There's no head-on attack in this article on the involvement of motive, is there? It's comments that identifies it.
Well, in the second paragraph, he says, "The outcome of a case turned very much on the motive of a foster carer." About halfway through that paragraph, he says, "This is perhaps a controversial approach."
Right. Right. I'm going to get an awful lot from Mr Tavares, authority, and the Scots Law Times.
Scots Law Times, an article by Professor Manners, who's professor of law at Stirling University, emeritus professor at Edinburgh. And we see the comment on page 228.
Yes. Main criticism concerns the importance accorded to motive.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yes, I have that.
And I, I take the point further, that it isn't just when considering whether foster carers are akin to employees, it would apply to any.
Yes.
And learn from this court and discuss my argument on page 48 in the bundle, paragraph 11 of his skeleton.
Yes. Paragraph 11?
Paragraph 11, yes. The Gs were acting principally in the interest of a family rather than as an integral part of a business activity of the defendant. We, we say that is impermissibly considering motive, which both parties had agreed was irrelevant, and the recorder had accepted. And we see that on page 138. Paragraph 49 in the recorder's judgment. Last three lines of para 49 on page 138.
Yes.
So notwithstanding the recorder too accepting that motive was irrelevant, it then, we say, became determinative. And if motive is stripped out of a consideration, there is nothing in this case to distinguish it from arms. Because the only other difference is the lack of an antecedent relationship, which the recorder correctly in our submission did not consider to be relevant. We see that on page 133, para 32.
When are we being fair to the judge below in this sense? That what she was really trying to look at was, was this a separate activity to the local authority's business? And it's in that context she's considering motivation. You say you can't take motive out of the discussion that she was having.
Well, no, and in paragraph 42, she directly confronts this.
She's looking, the question is whether or not the G family were engaged in activity undertaken on behalf of the defendant.
Yes, and she says it would be wholly artificial to consider what they were doing, I think it's a word, apart from why they were doing that task. The focus simply should have been on what they were doing, not why they were doing it.
Yeah, okay.
The final authority is DSN and Blackstone Football Club.
And what do we need that for?
It is the, a consideration by this court of arms, a distillation of those principles. And it's quite a short point, it appears on page 162 in DSN. Well, Justice Stuart Smith begins his consideration of arms on page 86, but it's page 80, sorry, paragraph 86, it's paragraph 87 that I'd like to consider, please.
So Lord Justice Stuart Smith brings risk, risk creation into the equation?
Yes. And in paragraph 87, he considers five features which he considers to be the most important, he extracts from arms. And I'd say that all of those could be applied to the claimant's situation. A, the activity of looking after a child in its care. B, the control looked at, even to the extent of preventing contact with his own mother. C, chose to place the claim with the foster carers, we've seen that entry in the record. D, decision to place the claim with the foster carers represented their decision about how to discharge their relevant activity. And E, gave rise to the recognized enterprise risk of protection. And all of that applies in this case. And let's round with particular points.
No.
We'll look at those points.
Yes, details of payments and anything you'd like to say about the present day regime as outlined by Lord Hughes. David, you got any questions?
Can I, can I just raise one thing? It may be a distraction. I, in a case three or four years ago, concerned with the status of the National Union of Professional Foster Carers, I was astonished to be told that this court had decided in a case called W in Essex County Council in 1992 or 93, that not, not only are foster carers not employees of the local authority, there is no contract at all between carers and the local authority. This has apparently been good law at Court of Appeal level for 30 years. It's not considered in, in, in the cases we've been looking at. Does it matter? Perhaps you can think about it over the lunch break. I don't think it matters, but it, it seems to me very odd that in, in all these cases about whether in particular circumstances, the, the nature of the local authority to foster carer relationship is akin to employment. Nobody seems to say that, by the way, it's not a contract at all.
Thank you, David. Yes.
I'm sorry to come back to this point about what happened in January nineteen eighty, but it may be important. You've, you've included in the bundle section twenty-one of the Child Care Act nineteen eighty. As we've established, that wasn't in force at the relevant time. I've had a quick look at the provisions of the Children Act nineteen forty-eight. The equivalent provision is in different terms. I think it's, it may be, the act may be structured in a different way. And it may well be that all the provisions in the nineteen eighty act are in the nineteen, or the relevant provision are in the nineteen forty-eight act. But section thirteen of the nineteen forty-eight act is couched in, in different terms. It looks as though that from the records, the local authority was of the impression that it, under the impression that it did not receive, uh, him into care until August. So I, for my part, it would be helpful if you could just clarify what your case is about the child's status between January and August.
Thank you. Mr. Bemont, anything you would like to add or say?
No, my lady, thank you.
With or without the permission of your leader?
Thank you, I'm very good.
No, well, we have noticed your presence and, uh, your contribution on the papers at least. Thank you. Mr. Ford, um, how long do you think you will be?
I think I will be about, uh, three quarters of an hour.
Three quarters of an hour. We're not going to finish, um, before the short adjournment.
No.
Would you like to start now or would you like to start again at, um, five past two? Shall we say five past two?
Entirely in court.
It's five past two.
Yes.
Would you want to start now? Have a break?
I think five past two.
Yep, five past two. I apologize to those who've just arrived in court. You're very welcome to come back in at five past two. But I'm afraid, as you've just heard, we've reached a point in the proceedings where we're going to stop now. But, uh, you're very welcome. Right, five past two, thank you.